Okay, everybody, welcome to the May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one regular meeting of the Rochester City Council. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Vavakwa.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here. Thank you. Now we're gonna have everybody, Councilmember Sage is gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Sage. Welcome, everybody. That seems like a first night of summer or summer weather. Just for everybody's in the in the audience and anybody watching the meeting, today is gonna be our last city council meeting on Zoom. We are going to be heading back to City Hall next week, next next meeting. I will say that I'm proud of everybody in the city. I think in the last, you know, fourteen months, we did efficient Zoom meetings, we ran the city as effectively as we can, and I think everybody did a very good job, so I'm very proud of that, but now we're heading back to City Hall. City manager and I are going to meet later in the week and kind of figure out the exact seating for everybody and the procedures. We will send that out in the manager's report. We will be following CDC guidelines, and it looks like if you've been vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. If you haven't been vaccinated, you're supposed to wear a mask. Again, we'll get all that out there. We're still are gonna practice social distancing. So probably the first few meetings, we will not be up in our normal council chambers, but we will be a little more spread out on the floor. But in the manager's report, we'll send a picture of that for everybody to know. If anybody has any comments or something, please, you know, let me know off camera. But that's where we're gonna be. So the next meeting in June will be at City Hall. The Planning Commission and the DDA will also be meeting in person. All the other meetings, they can meet in person, or they can still meet in on Zoom. Subcommittees are allowed to meet on Zoom, so each subcommittee can work that out, but it's the three main committees, council, planning and DDA that by statute have to meet in person down at City Hall. So that is coming, just so everybody knows that. Any questions or comments on that before we get started? Okay, so next we move on to public comment, scheduled, non-scheduled presentations. First, we have the local archive presentation by Rochester Hills Museum, Pat McKay, curator, welcome.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the invitation. We've spent a lot of working with Blaine Wing, your city manager, and 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 coming up with a partnership program where we can preserve the local history. And I'm here with Samantha Lawrence. Samantha is the archivist here at the Rochester Hills Museum. And as part of this program, we have, I know, a couple of phases. You're providing funding that allows us to hire an intern. This all, this whole program just started in January, so then we brought the loads over and and are going through that. And Samantha's gonna give you more of an update on that. And then part of the part of your funding also provides some of the asset-free materials that we use to help preserve these things for for generations to come, to take them out of cardboard boxes and things like that. I'm gonna do a share screen and and open up my, I've just, we have just a very brief PowerPoint. Let me know what that is showing up.
Very good.
From the beginning. So, yeah, so this is our partnership. It's between the cities of Rochester and Rochester Hills. And as we know, when there's a partnership in our community, it works out every time. Partnerships like the OPC and Pink Creek Trail and the Clinton River Trail, the library and I don't know what I'm missing there. Ra ra. We really had some great success, and this is another one. This is really something exciting about to talk about. You're at the museum, you know, we've got some really big things going on. And if you've not, if you're not familiar with our campus of buildings, this is a public park in our Rochester Hills Park system. Half of our buildings are in Rochester Hills, half of our buildings are in the city of Rochester. In some ways, I say, this is a remarkable, phenomenal site listed on the National Register of Historic Places. We all have something to be proud of. I also say it's probably the greatest dog walking park in the community, because it seems like we get a lot of that, too. But, you know, our site is open, you know, we do have Stony Creek runs through our property. We have everything from vintage baseball to archives, you know, in our in our site. So we're delighted to share these buildings with with you and with the whole community. And we've been doing this for about forty-two years now, so it's really something to be excited about. The museum started forty-two years ago, just with the Van Who's and Farmhouse. And there was, as usual, a local petition drive that asked Michigan State University not to sell this house as as part of the liquidating of the Van Who's estate. And that's where the museum started with the acceptance of this building. And then over the course of time, we've been able to re-acquire the Van Who's and Farm property. Our most recent acquisition was more than ten years ago now, is when we negotiated an arrangement that we took over the operation of the Stony Creek Schoolhouse. The school system was kind of realizing that they were having difficulty maintaining that building. And and it was hard when they passed bond issues that are very specific in their funding, and they deal a lot with steel and glass and concrete, and the schoolhouse wasn't fitting into any of those arrangements. So we were able to take that over and and run it. We are just in the process right now of really finishing some major, major projects. You know, during the pandemic, we were just in the midst of of doing a couple of major projects. Initially, we were just gonna rebuild our equipment barn, and our equipment barn is a replica of a building and the exact footprint, exact dimensions of the original building. We worked very closely. This this part of the construction is in the city of Rochester, so Vidya, I do appreciate all of her help. The building, of course, needed variances for height and for in the road right away. And that was important to us, because it's it's really the arrangements of these buildings on the national register site. It's very important for us, and we really appreciate the cooperation all along. Both working with your engineering staffs and Blaine Wing and Nick Banda really helped us. There was a lot of little issues that became big issues that we were able to resolve. But so just as we were getting ready to start the equipment barn, we also had this terrifying realization that the entire roof structure on our dairy barn needed to be replaced. And that was something that we were not planning on doing. It ended up being a two and a half million dollar project. That is just in the last two weeks of of being completed, so the entire roof structure came off. And in that roof structure, of course, as well, also, you know, the shingles were getting close to the end of their life. We had three furnaces up in the in the attics. You know, certainly, you know, it's the roof structure was about eighty years old, as it was. And, you know, so it was a chance with that to to do a whole lot of updates on the building. So it's now all LED lighting. It's, you know, backup generator for almost our entire site now. We have backup generator. So for special events and for archives, we never have to worry about losing power and everything getting very cold. And so we're we're very excited about that that project. And then the reconstruction of our equipment barn is a one million dollar project, and all that work is done in the city of Rochester. So we appreciate your help. Two other things I'm just gonna mention quickly. We are working with the Downtown Development Authority to add twelve more of the back-in-the-day signs. We have these scattered around downtown Rochester, and we're trying to be very careful, so we're we're putting them on with clamps around the posts, so we don't have to drill into any of the light posts. And they're all located where the backdrop is is the real image, and we're showing the archival image. You know, every single time I talk about one of these projects, I have to lean on and point towards Samantha Lawrence. She's the one who designs these, comes up with QR codes, so when you hold your phone up to that, it takes you to an archival website. We can learn more information. And, you know, so the good news is we've got twelve up, we're putting twelve more up. The bad news is we could do about sixty more. There is so much to talk about in downtown Rochester. And I jokingly say this, but I am partially true. I'm not sure that Farmington Hills and Auburn Hills and Utica and Shelby Township and Mount Clemens can do and tell the same number of unbelievable stories that downtown Rochester can can tell. So we're very excited to do this again. Our goal, Christie had a June first deadline, it might be a couple of days after that, but we're trying really hard to get those under fabrication. Our city sign shop in Rochester Hills makes them, and Christie helps cover some of the costs. So, you know, I think I just jumped ahead. I apologize. I'm gonna hand it over and introduce you to Samantha Lawrence. Samantha is our, she's a part-time archivist here at the museum. And and there's really a remarkable talent that we have, and I'm gonna let her talk just a little bit about the project and the interns and how we're doing so far. So Samantha, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Samantha, excuse me one second. Brian, I think Councilmember Sage is trying to get in.
Okay, let me look.
Can you see if you can?
Will do.
Is he on there?
I do not see him in the waiting room.
Okay, cuz he just texted me that he's in the waiting room. So can you just keep, can you just keep monitoring that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Pat, Pat, go ahead.
Sure. Samantha, are you on, so you can?
So, as Pat mentioned, I'm the archivist here at the museum, and I get the fun job of working with all of our archives and collections. So we have over five thousand archival photographs related to the greater Rochester area. We have newspapers from Rochester dating back to eighteen seventy-two. So we really have a really incredible collection at the museum. And I think my biggest goal as the archivist is to share it with other people. I wanna make sure that the community gets to use and seize the benefit of preserving this local history. And so and we're always looking for ways to collaborate with other organizations, and we're always looking for ways to continue to preserve and promote this history. So one of the ways that we've done this is through this partnership with the city of Rochester, or city of Rochester, as well as the Rochester Historical Commission, and
Samantha, can I just throw, can you talk about two things, the newspapers and some of the other organizations that we collaborate with?
Yeah, of course. So so one of the things that we've been working on over the past few years is to digitize our newspaper collection. So we have our newspaper collection digitized, and we made it available on the Oakland County Historical Resources website, which is a really incredible website where a lot of historical organizations in Oakland County put their historical material. And so it's a really great way to research Rochester's history. And we also work with a lot of local organizations like Rochester Garden Club, Rochester Junior Women's Club, to help them preserve their archives. So a lot of these organizations don't have a building or a place to store their collections. And, you know, they're such a huge part of this community, and we really wanna make sure that the things that they're creating are being preserved. So we act as a sort of a storage repository for them, so that we can ensure that they are preserved for many generations to come. And 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 so when it comes to our collaboration with Rochester and the Rochester Historical Commission, so this partnership has been really great. It's a really great way to kind of combine all of this local history. And we're also so dedicated to preserving, you know, the history of Rochester. And so as Pat kind of briefly mentioned, in January, we got a portion of the Rochester Historical Commission's collection here at the museum. And we were able to hire an intern, Annika Peterson, and she really made a huge dent in this project. So the biggest thing is we wanted to kind of first see what was in this collection. And so she went through and she cataloged four hundred and forty-eight items. And we also went through and photographed over two hundred items. We refolded and rehoused over eighty textiles. And we also digitized a lot of items in the collection. Over a thousand items were digitized. And so our goal is to really get an idea of what's in this collection and then make it available for, you know, the community. So we'd like to make it available on the Oakland County Historical Resources website. We'd also like to make it available for researchers if they wanna come on site at the museum. And then just to share it with the community through social media, through touchscreen exhibits, there's just really a lot of different things that we can we can do with this collection. And we're really excited for this opportunity and to really combine our efforts in preserving local history.
So we're making progress. When Samantha mentions the catalog, and we use a system called Pass Perfect, which is a collections management software system, and we have an ability to put that online, too. So, you know, we don't always reveal all the, if there's a value, or sometimes where it's stored. We do try to, we're very, we're very concerned and aware of security in our buildings and our collections. But we, the goal is transparency in everything that we own. And so I know I can, now I can go into our newspapers, and I don't think this last batch of newspapers we just digitized, I think it's the nineteen seventies to nineteen ninety, some hope, and Samantha's nodding her head. At some point, by by fall, we'll finally have that all uploaded. But you could, you could go in there, and in the search bar, you know, you can type in Nancy Salvia or Amanda Harrison, and you can start seeing, you know, we can look up anything on them or on James Graham, or anytime those names are mentioned, it'll search a hundred and forty years of newspapers. And once again, I would challenge any other community in Michigan that has digitized and made searchable all their newspapers. And we've done that. So we still have the hard copies. For some people who are not computer literate and struggle with that, we say, call Samantha, and we'll help you do that. Samantha just held a scanning session for, so people who are struggling with trying to digitize their records, they can come to the museum, and we help scan them and and give them a thumb drive when they walk out. So we try to, everything that we have, we try and share right back with the community. And and I think with the new signs going up in downtown, we got a bike ride coming up on Thursday night. You know, we are very committed to the history of downtown Rochester. It's still the heart and, I think, soul of our of this entire community. And so we take that very seriously, and this partnership certainly helps us out to do that job, too. So we're happy to answer any questions and allow you to continue on with your meeting, too.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Patrick and Samantha. I just wanted to comment on the back-of-the-day signs. When you started putting those up, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but every time I'm downtown, there are people looking at those. Good. I mean, just just how you have them set up, so you go, oh, that's how that building looked like. So to hear that you're gonna put another dozen out in the next few weeks, and and we have the bandwidth to do another, you know, forty-eight or sixty or so, you're right, I don't see that in any other downtown. And I just wanna thank you both for doing that. That was a very, we are, we are a historical city. We're a historical downtown, and tie those two together, I was, whoever came up with the idea, brilliant.
Thank you very much. Yep, we'll continue on.
Pat, can you not save your screen anymore? Thank you.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Pat and Samantha. This is great. Thank you so much for your partnership. As a resident here in Stony Point, I can tell you that the museum grounds are our park. It's our go-to park, and especially if you're in the pandemic, a lot of, lot of our neighborhood has been down there. So just thank you. And if you could also share a little bit about your reopening plans and when residents can get into some of the buildings, cuz I know, obviously, you've been under construction.
Yeah, so thank, thanks. It's, it's been a heroic effort to get the buildings done. And now, and we're in the last, tomorrow, they bring a custodial service in to start cleaning the inside of buildings. We're that close. They're street sweeping our parking lot tonight, so it's all very exciting. But, yeah, there's another whole mountain of work that's gonna take at least another four to five weeks. And that mountain will be moving all of our exhibits. We had just moved our exhibits into the into the dairy barn about two months before we pulled them all out. And so those all go back in, and so, you know, we have a real challenge. We have a lot of stories to tell and not enough room. And so part of our stories, we tell this remarkable story about the Van Who's and family, these remarkable women from our community. But we also have this, you know, two hundred years of history of our community, we tell, too. So the good news is we'll start moving the exhibits that we have done. We'll start moving those in the first week in June. There are a whole lot of exhibits that we have never seen before. They were designed, and they're sitting in a warehouse in Ann Arbor. So finally, they're coming back. For instance, things like the mastodon bones. The mastodon bones are, not all of them, but a whole leg bone that's nine feet tall in the display case, those are all coming back. And so there's a whole bunch of new stuff that'll be coming back. We're hoping, and and just throwing out generally, probably the second week in July is when we hope to be open. And we've been holding off on that, cuz we never knew what, you know, for a long time, until this past week, twenty-five people, most we could have in our building. So now that things are opening up a little bit more, we'll be able to have an event that's a little bit larger. And we can hardly wait to find that date, pick the date, and then share it with everyone and invite you out to the museum. So it's coming soon. And you're right, last summer, that's, it was the busiest summer I have ever seen in our parking lot. It, we had more beach umbrellas and swimmers in our in Stony Creek than I have ever thought would be possible. That allowed us to start a program called Stream Science. And we would just found ourselves driving around in our golf cart, engaging with people, making sure they understood that. It wasn't just an old house with a creek, that it was a nationally registered historic site. It really gave us a chance to engage with people in a different kind of way. We normally don't walk out to everybody throwing a frisbee in our yard, although we certainly encourage it. And just to throw one last thing out, last Wednesday night was prom, Thursday night was prom night in Rochester High School. And we had one young lady called us, and said, I've heard her two friends could come and take their pictures. We didn't realize their eighteen hundred best friends would come with them. And so it was a little bit bigger of a crowd than we expected, but that they would come to our site, realizing there are lots of beautiful places to take pictures in our community. And once again, we were delighted, during the day, we started washing the gazebo and getting things cleaned up. We said, we had a feeling that it was one of those perfect evenings. And once again, for us, that's exactly why we exist, is to share our site with everyone else, whether it's prom pictures or somebody who's a history fanatic, we're glad when they come to us and we can help. So thanks for the kind words, Nancy.
Anything further? So thank you, Samantha and Pat, and Pat, thank you for your years and years of service to our community.
Well, you're welcome, and we really appreciate Mr. Wang, all the help he did to pull this this deal off. And, you know, we know that there were some reservations with the Rochester Historical Commission, but they have been sending representatives to us. I think one of them was a volunteer with Samantha. And we wanna make sure at the end of the day that everyone's very comfortable with this. And soon we'll be able to have opportunities to, and we'll pull these archives out at every event that we can to have them out. And usually with a guard like Samantha hovering over them to make sure. And we pass out white gloves and say, go ahead and touch them now, you know, so we can do that safely and share them. So we're looking forward, and we really appreciate, there's been a lot of players in this, certainly not just Samantha and I. So we really appreciate the trust you've given to us and know that we take these very seriously, and we protect them. And we have rooms with new humidifiers and detection systems, and and the rooms are fairly high secure. There's, we store most of our stuff in our dairy barn. It's the one room with no windows that, nobody can access that except Samantha and I. So we really take the security very seriously. So thank you for your time and letting us come tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Just as an update, Councilmember Sage is having computer problems, but he is now connected via phone. So he is trying to get back on, but he is there on the phone. Okay, next we have the recognition of the Rochester DDA won a national award, and we will let Councilmember Albrecht talk first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna read some things. I was meeting with Christie a couple of weeks ago. And I know in one of the manager's reports, and and I know a council member, Peterson has given us updates from the DDA meetings, but I wanted to paraphrase a couple of things that were in the Detroit Free Press and some other publications. That, just to give some recognition to Christie, Jenna and Taylor, and and the, you know, the board under the leadership of Ben Jovanelli. But so I'm gonna read, "Since the beginning of the pandemic, downtowns across the country have encouraged their communities to support local restaurants in creative and engaging ways. We're thrilled to celebrate the ingenuity of these Main Street programs by announcing the winners of the American Express Shop Small Order In Help Out Innovation Challenge." The the American Express Order In Help Out campaign encouraged consumers to support local restaurants by ordering, takeout, and delivery. Applicants of the Order In Help Out Innovation Challenge were invited to submit a local marketing campaign they launched to bring the Order In Help Out campaign to life in their community or share a successful effort they recently ran that supports local restaurant. Entries were judged on strategy, innovation, engagement, feasibility, need and response to COVID nineteen, and results and impact. Now, these were Main Streets across the whole United States, so they have received a lot of entries. And as we read in in the mayor's report, excuse me, the city manager's report, first place went to our own downtown Rochester. Through their Foodie February campaign in February twenty twenty-one, downtown Rochester encouraged their community to order from any downtown restaurant by offering a grand prize drawing and weekly Foodie Friday drawing for restaurant gift cards. To promote, to promote Foodie Fri- February, downtown Rochester held photo shoots at the restaurants to create social media graphics, placed articles in local newspapers, and hosted live cooking demonstrations on local TV channels. During the month of February, these efforts generated over forty-one thousand dollars for local restaurants. Downtown Rochester also created the Downtown Dining Dash, an online platform that offered customers a one-stop shop to purchase gift certificates from downtown restaurants. Downtown Rochester handled all the transactions and fulfillment, and a hundred percent of the sales went back to the restaurants. I remember I bought four or five of them myself, that I unfortunately used them all up by now. The program is still in place, and Rogers Rochester sold over two hundred and fifty downtown restaurant gift certificates for an impact of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. In addition, Rochester, the DDA struck out a moneymaker with its love local Rochester theme. I think many of us bought the initial masks that had the love local Rochester. Using the slogan, they, in addition to the masks, they sold hats, shirts, mugs, bearing the phrase, love local Rochester. They raised over ninety thousand dollars through that, which all went back again into our business. So what what that all resulted in was, we received, the Downtown Development Authority received a five thousand dollar award. The first-place winner received five thousand dollars from American Express. And Christie and her team should have formed, just have pumped that back into the downtown businesses. So again, I wanted to just, you know, get, for the public to hear how well of a job they did during the pandemic. Finally, and I know we talked about this when we were going over the budget a couple of meetings ago, and last meeting also, the DDA took, contributed over one point three million dollars to help the city survive COVID nineteen. Marcy and Anthony did a good job with their budget presentation along with Blaine Wing. When you drill down to that, over eight hundred and forty thousand dollars of that one point three million dollars went to the parking fund to, you know, help keep it balanced and also to install new new parking meters. Another three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars went to the PSD to support local businesses with with their their assessment, so they didn't have to pay them during the tough year. Many of you saw last year, and they've just come out a few weeks ago, the the platforms and parklets, which cost another over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The bottom line here is that the DDA stepped up during time of need and really partnered with the city administration and city council, that three-legged stool I've talked about years and years out, to make sure that our downtown remained a place that was attractive for people to shop and 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 dine out when we could. And many of us, in fact, I'm sure everybody on this call enjoyed the fact that we could get out of our house and and walk the streets of downtown or enjoy some of these things or purchase the gift certificates. I have a lot of love local Rochester memorabilia that I'll keep, maybe one day it'll end up in the Rochester Hills Museum for posterity, but I just wanna do, you know, for for all of us on on city council and city administration to really give a a big kudos and thank you to Christie, Jenna, and Taylor, and and the leadership that Ben has provided as the chair of the Downtown Development Authority. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Further comments? Okay. Next, we have a consideration of a special event application from the City Beautiful Commission to hold the Dog and Butterfly Dog Wash on Saturday, July seventeenth, to be held on the west side of City Hall. We have Rachel Williams and Melissa Bavacqua tonight to talk about this project. Rachel, do you wanna start?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. That is a tough act to follow, though, Mark. So the City Beautiful Commission has some really exciting initiatives for this year. In order to help fund some of those initiatives, in addition to our budget from city council, we are working on fundraisers. This includes our Dog and Butterfly Dog Wash, which we are hoping to host on July seventeen. Am I able to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So here are some photos of where we are proposing to have the dog wash on the west side of City Hall. There are hoses available. We would have little kiddie pools for the dogs. We are asking for a minimum donation. And we would set up an event on Facebook and have people register to come as well, so that we can get an idea of how many participants we would have that that day. We did propose a rain date as well, I believe, for July thirty-first. Here's another image. And then a T-shirt design for the volunteers helping that day, created by Olivia Bavacqua. And my wonderful vice chair, Melissa, has really been sorting out all of the details of this. So I'll let her explain some of the sponsorship opportunities that we have lined up and further details.
Melissa, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thanks, Rachel. So to have the dog wash, first of all, we need, we have the basic things such as the kiddie pools to wash the dogs in. But I went to speak with Cindy from the Urban Dog, and that is on Rochester Road in the City Walk Plaza. And she has agreed to supply dog shampoo for the dogs. And then, of course, we'll have the water source from City Hall, from the hoses. And then, at And then at the end, when they have been um, dried off, they will get a dog treat and she has agreed to donate the treats too. Then, um, to dry them off, a bill from Mr. C's Car Wash has agreed to donate the use of one-hundred white fluffy towels to dry the dogs with. And he also today said that if this passes, that um, he would also donate uh, fifty dollars. So we would already be starting off with a fifty-dollar donation, which would be really great. And then Heather from the Second Street Quilt Shop has agreed to donate materials so that we can cut out a bandana type, um, kind of like a scarf to put around the dogs at the end, once they've been dried off and tied around their neck or tied to their collar. And um, we've told them that if they send us a template for signage, we could put signs up at the dog wash. We would also use it um, for articles and local publications. We can use it on our social media sites. So you know, because of course we'll want to thank our sponsors. And then on the back of the volunteer T-shirts, we would also have the icons for those three businesses. It would be under where it says dog wash. Um, so that'll be very nice to um, to make it a nicer event and we hope for good weather and we hope that there will be plenty of dogs, dog owners that will bring their dogs. And uh, then there's the other issue of volunteers. Um, most of us off the CBC are available for that day to help to wash the dogs and dry them and all of that, give them the treats and put their little bandana on. And we would also really love it if members of the city council would like to come and maybe wash one or two dogs or stay for the whole four hours.
I'm in.
All right.
Yes, I'm in as well.
Thank you. Additionally, for safety, we'll be asking the owners to keep their dog on the leash while we wash them. Um, and because it is by City Hall, uh, Chief Shattenhelm explained that the dogs won't need a park permit.
I think Dean already volunteered me, so I'm in too.
Perfect.
I think I'm on that as well, yeah.
I don't think I have a choice.
And Amanda gave us some wonderful promotional photos of her dog. Uh, if this passes, we can share that with the event. Um, but we're really hoping for a great turnout. Additionally, Kit and I forget the other dog's name from Pearl. Pearl, uh, from the police station may make an appearance for a nice photo up.
I'll definitely be there to volunteer the day of.
Eight AM to one PM.
Well, it's eight AM setup and then nine AM it starts until one and then we have until two to break it all down.
Great design on the T-shirts.
You gotta have a T-shirt these days, right?
Exactly.
Uh, council, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion. I'd just like to add that I'm I'm so impressed with the work that's happening on the City Beautiful Commission. I'm glad to see this fundraiser happening and to investigate the other fundraising opportunities in the future. I'm excited to participate in this event and I'd like to ask, uh, make the motion to approve this event application as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Harrison, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Further discussion? Hard to vote against this one. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Here, yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Woof, yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Rachel and Melissa.
Thank you so much and thank you for the yes vote.
And good luck with your fundraiser.
Thank you.
All right, next we have approval of the ministers consideration of the minutes of the regular made of May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Or or by Councilmember Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have approval of the consent agenda. First is consideration of special event application of the Leader Dogs for the Blind to hold the Bark and Brew five K run on Saturday, June fifth, starting in the municipal park and the Rochester Riverwalk. Actually, we have the river review of the current two thousand twenty-one special event calendar. And finally, the approval of the motorcycle training agreement with the Oakland County Sheriff Office.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Support by co- support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion. Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one comment that I wanted to make is that we, I understand that the courses don't overlap, but we have the Nails on Wheels five K and the Bark and Brew five K, um, both on the same day, Saturday, June fifth. So I think that there's going to be an increase in traffic flow and also I I can't run both the same day. So we can really encourage our partners to, you know, maybe collaborate a little bit more. Core is a great organization to do that through. They meet at the library every month. So you can make sure that we're not repeating our fundraisers on the same day because we all want to participate and support these local organizations and we have two on June fifth. We can't always do both. So please just keep that in in mind.
Very good point. Uh, uh, Chief Shattenhelm.
Yeah, just, uh, I know that Representative from Leader Dog for the Blind is is on the call, but uh, we did have that discussion and ending for this event and uh, so we we've kind of covered that for the future for sure.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, did you want to make a comment?
Um, thank you so much, everybody and um, Councilmember Harrison, definitely for the future. We are planning on moving this probably closer to Griffin Clawback in Rochester Hills. Um, although we do love Rochester and hopefully we can collaborate and maybe even change dates for the future, but I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Well, I think Councilmember Harrison can try to do his double duty. It's only six and a half miles or something, right?
Amanda, you'll be doing a ten K, two five Ks.
There you go. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, and good luck with that. Uh, there's no old business or table items. There's no public hearing legislative deliberation. We have the resolution regarding the clerk and the treasurer oversight. Um, Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Attorney, um, they've they've um, put together an amendment after what we talked about last time, but I think Attorney Crock, did you want to discuss anything, any changes?
Um, I'll just be brief. Um, this is a resolution that was discussed previously. Um, the uh, city council had expressed some a desire to have something more formal uh, with regard to the city manager's role uh, with regard to the clerk and treasurer position, which are direct reports to city council. What this um, uh, resolution does is to specifically give the city manager authority to provide the day-to-day supervision and administration and direction to those two positions. Um, consistent with the uh, the code provisions listed. Um, and uh, there's discussion regarding uh, possible discipline and what the city manager should and shouldn't uh, have the ability to do. And so the proposed after talking with Labor Council as well, uh, it was decided to put in that uh, city manager has authority to issue verbal and written reprimands. Um, but that's as far as it would go. Um, that city council uh, would have the uh, sole authority to uh, issuing suspensions, last chance agreements, performance improvement plans or uh, termination decisions, of course. Um, the idea there was that anything um, more than uh, written reprimands and verbal reprimands would really affect the uh, the employment relationship or could have terms of uh, that really should be left to city council. Um, and finally, uh, item number three was, uh, there was there was a late addition about, uh, uh, annual review and evaluation. And I know for the past several years, the city council has expressed kind of a head scratch like this can't be the best way to do this because we don't see the, you know, these two positions every day. And so this, what this does is it uh, has the city manager perform the annual review and evaluation. Uh, and we did put in that the city council may do it as well. And the city council would be solely responsible for approving compensation or benefit adjustments. But so, you know, that was always kind of that awkward, uh, awkward situation where uh, seven of you uh, really don't have the day-to-day um, involvement, whereas uh, city manager would have. So um, I believe that it's, uh, if this meets with the city council's understanding and expectation and desire, then the the action item would be to move the resolution um, for uh, to pass.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Si- City Manager, do you want to add anything or that I think that was pretty clear?
I'd say it's pretty concise. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Quite, uh, Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, um, I I know that when we were doing the reviews earlier last year, um, I suggested that, you know, I could work with the the city to, you know, maybe update the reviews because we, there was a lot of discussion about that we didn't have. We we weren't there to see attendance or some of the factors on there. So um, I see what Attorney Crott has put in for section three, but I still would like to be able to have our input included um, to the to the extent that uh, uh, you send that out to us. The areas that we don't have a a full vision of, we can leave as NA, which is what I did when I gave my feedback. So I just, I just want to make sure Attorney Crott and City Manager Wing that item three, which I'm looking at right now, does not preclude us from giving feedback on both of those positions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Attorney.
Yeah, you know, uh, Councilmember Albrecht, that's a, that was a great point. We, that was that last sentence in there is because we do feel that uh, a number of the city council members do feel uh, that that would be, uh, that they wanted to keep that control and and we would still uh, welcome the, because that form that was uh, we would still welcome that uh, input and collaboration with you as far as a better product that maybe would be disseminated to city council. Uh, and uh, so that that, I think that is still consistent.
Very good. Further discussion. Mayor Pro Tem Sylvia.
Thank you. Thank you. City Attorney, thank you for your work on this. Um, I think this is really well-written and really works to provide um, a good day-to-day uh, guidance um, and structure within the city as well as give city council the kind of check and balance with these two positions. So I think this is great work and I I support this uh, uh, this resolution. Make a motion to approve this resolution as presented.
Motion by Ma- the Mayor Pro Tem. Or support by Councilmember Bavacqua. Further discussion? Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I I will not be voting for this tonight because I think it is an overreach. Um, I I do have a couple of questions though, because I do think we need to keep the separation of powers there because that's why it was set up that way in the charter. Um, and I would like to know though, will the city manager actually be meeting with on the treasurer and um, the city clerk and doing the review process or just do the re- do the review process without meeting them as in the past? Because I would like, I would like to know that uh, they've actually had the opportunity to sit down with him and um, go over things before it's presented to city council.
Mr. City Manager.
Yep, now that I would be doing the evaluations, instead of just giving my comments, I would treat them the same as all the other directors, which is uh, going over with a a meeting with them to review. Um, they're, they would still do their self-evaluation and then I would do their evaluation with them.
All right. I still feel that it should have been done this whole time, um, to in fairness to them, without them having to receive um, remarks and comments without knowing that those were happening before they were presented to us. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Motion passes. Next on the reports in the regular business, first is the mayoral appointments, the boards, commissions and committees. Um, you can do them one at a time or you could do them all together, depending on what council wants.
I would like to make a motion to do them one at a time.
Okay. Is there, is there support for that motion to do one at a time?
Does one at a time mean each board or each person?
No, each board.
Each board.
And it would be clearer then when people go to.
All right, I'll support that motion.
Okay, um, so first we have which, um, the cemetery, cemetery advisory board.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Peterson. Their support.
Or.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have City Beautiful.
I'll make a motion to support as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Harrison.
Or.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
Okay, uh, what's the next one?
I'll make a motion to approve Downtown Development Authority. This is Bob Bloomingdale and Paul Hague.
Thank you. Motion by the Mayor Pro Tem Sylvia.
Support.
Or.
Or by Councilmember Peterson. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Okay, Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Very good. Next we have Historical. I'll make the motion to approve, uh, June Hopelock, Eric Bothwell, Bob Michelka and Kay Johnson. Motion by Councilmember Sage. Or by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Next we have Planning. Uh, Dennis and Patricia Clark-Martin.
Motion to approve.
By Council Mayor Pro Tem Sylvia. Or support by Councilmember Bavacqua. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
Wait, did I get everyone?
Yeah, I think it was six to one. Okay, next the last one is a PSD, Patricia Eisenbrom.
To approve Patricia Eisenbaum for Principal Shopping District.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Or by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
All right. Next is on to city council appointments, the boards, commissions and committees. Again, you can do one board at a time or all at once. I'll make a motion to do one board at a time. Okay. All right, which is the first one? Bank Creek Trailway, I'll make the motion to, uh,
Bank Creek Trailway, I'll make the motion to reappoint Linda Gammage.
Support.
Motion by council member Sage, support by council member Peterson. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacwa.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Okay. City manager, I don't have the list in front of me.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, thank you.
To appoint David Gassen for the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you. Motion by council member Albrecht.
Support.
Or by council member Peterson. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Bavacwa.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Okay, next.
Sustainability. Next agenda.
Sustainability.
Exogen item.
Next, thank you. Okay. So thank you for those appointments, everybody. Next we have the sustainability report and a worksheet update. Vidia, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, members of the council. I have put together for you tonight a brief presentation that I will share on my screen at this time. This was a study that was presented to the planning commission previously. It is being represented to you with just an update in the date. In the early 2018, the city of Rochester made a commitment to reviewing all new developments based on specific standards that would contribute these projects as being sustainable towards Rochester's vision for the future. This study process involved research of multiple model studies that are cited in this PowerPoint before you. Taking the competence from all of those and our experience from what Rochester was undergoing in terms of growth and development pressures, the city also created a sustainable Rochester steering committee. The steering committee had in-person collaborative working sessions. They had one-on-one meetings with the staff and department heads. We did online surveys and feedback loops, and then a draft report review was presented along with the comments. The end result of that study, of the sustainable Rochester study was a document that is called the Sustainable Rochester Development Framework. It basically included a methodology of how the Sustainable Rochester Project Evaluation Worksheet, which is the actual tool which the city can use to evaluate projects, was developed. And it also included a map book with local and regional data, which provided a background for how the worksheet was designed. Now, the main thing about the Sustainable Rochester Worksheet was a total of six sustainability values, which were environmental health, mobility, fiscal strength, public services, strong neighborhoods, and downtown viability. These were then divided into twenty components, and each of these components was assigned one point. Whenever a new project applied to the city of Rochester for special projects approval, they had to self-evaluate themselves first, based on the Sustainable Rochester Evaluation Worksheet, which included these twenty criteria. And they had to give themselves an evaluation score, and then the city consultant, which we, along with city staff, reviewed their evaluation, self-evaluation, reviewed the project, and came up with a score for what exactly that project would have. At the time the Sustainable Rochester Methodology Framework was adopted, the city had decided it was a study which was the first of its kind. This wasn't something that had been done locally, although it was based on other model studies that had been done. It was the first of its kind that was applied anywhere that we know of over here in Michigan. So it was decided at the time that once we apply it, this study will be revisited in one year by the planning commission and city council to see how effective it was. And to also see if any changes need to be made in order to tweak this worksheet for being most effective. Several projects did go through the Sustainability Evaluation Worksheet and they're approved as special projects. Going through them, the planning commission realized that the twenty indicators that are there did not necessarily apply to all the projects. For example, one of the projects that was a special that had to undergo through the sustainability evaluation, sustainability evaluation was applicable not just to special projects, but also a new development that was starting on a weekend site anywhere in the city. One of the projects was the Revolve Warehouse that is located on South Street. Now, if you look at the sustainability worksheet, several of the indicators were for housing, pedestrian access, proximity to downtown. Now, the sustainability evaluation worksheet gave one points for each one of these indicators. That was the original scoring, which is the first column. Now, what happened was some of these projects could simply not even attempt to get five or eight of these points because first of all, they were nowhere near the DDA. They were not a residential project or a commercial project. It was an industrial project, so they could not contribute anything towards the housing mix or housing affordability. There were several such issues where the project got stuck because the indicator scoring was out of twenty. The planning commission discussed in detail whether the projects to which these, some of these indicators are not applicable, maybe we just take those indicators off. But then it made the division of the twenty points unfair because some projects would be scored on a total of thirteen points, other projects would be scored on a total of twenty points. So the planning commission asked us to come up with a new method where we would give weighted scores to the various categories. We would first classify the uses into two groups, those that are in the DDA, those that are not in the DDA, whether they are mixed uses and/or if they are purely residential uses or if they are non-residential uses. And depending upon which of the categories they fell, the points would go anywhere from just half a point all the way up to two points, depending upon how much weight was given to that particular indicator. That resulted in the creation of a new worksheet, which I will shortly share with you. The next result of the Sustainability Evaluation Worksheet was that if a project scored up to seven points, the project was considered as not sustainable. That is, it did not meet the city's goals, so the applicant had to go back to the drawing sheet. If they scored anywhere between eight to fourteen points, the project was considered as something the city might consider, but needs to mitigate, which means they would have to improve their score based on those indicators, maybe provide additional pedestrian network, maybe provide more affordable housing options, or maybe invest more in the infrastructure. If a project scored between fifty and twenty points, it was deemed as sustainable and meeting the city's goals and thereby could move forward. The Sustainability Evaluation Score Sheet was adopted as a policy by the city council. Just because the project was deemed sustainable, it wasn't necessary that the project would be approved by the planning commission and city council. But it definitely gave the planning commission and the city councils to evaluate all the projects based on the same criteria rather than using just subjective standards by looking at individual projects as they came forward. The result of the new weighted score sheet was the creation of this modified score sheet. It still continues to have all of the twenty indicators, but they are now split into impacting DDA, not impacting DDA, and achieving scoring points anywhere from point five all the way up to two point five in one of these cases. So each of these indicators tells you what the baseline data is for the indicator and what the target is for each of these projects to achieve. And this is the required information that the applicant had to provide in this column. Once all of these twenty indicator points are totaled, the project will be evaluated. Total number of possible points irrespective of what type of project it is or where it is located, the project scoring would still be consistent at twenty points each. And this would provide the planning commission and the city council the ability to evaluate each and every project using the same standards. This revised worksheet was presented to the planning commission at multiple meetings. The planning commission discussed each of the criteria and indicators in detail. They did ask for clarification on a couple of these items, which was provided to them. And the planning commission unanimously at their April planning commission meeting recommended that the updated worksheet now be adopted by the city council so that all forthcoming projects can be evaluated based upon this more equitable worksheet that has been prepared. At this time, I will stop my screen share and I have John Jackson, the principal at McKenna with me tonight at the meeting. And John and I hope to be able to answer any questions that you might have with regard to the updated sustainability worksheet. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Vidia. Questions? Council member Harrison.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Vidia. I appreciate all the hard work you put into this. I, my question, I, I'm just curious, has the planning commission already reviewed this and what was their feedback?
Yes, the planning commission actually reviewed this revised worksheet at least on three different occasions. And they made a recommendation to approve it, and they sent it on to the city council at their April meeting earlier this year. So the planning commission was happy at the fact that now we have a weighted scores for different indicators, which makes sure that whether a project is industrial or purely residential or mixed use, they are still all targeting a total of twenty points. Basically, the bar is raised for only top quality projects to come into the city in the future.
Further comments, council, city manager wing?
Yep. Vidia, could you also maybe note, I know during the, the planning commission discussion that you actually ran through and did an analysis if the, for three, I think, or four of the projects, if they would have been gone through the, the current one versus what it would be for the new one, just to kind of explain, because I know there was some discussion at the planning commission.
Yes, I would be happy to share that on my screen. I did not specifically go through those because a couple of those projects, unfortunately, due to the economy and cost of construction, did not proceed beyond it. For example, Blossom Mills. Blossom Mills is the senior housing development that was approved at the corner of Elizabeth and East Third, East Second Street. It was a one hundred and thirty-seven unit, six-story senior residential facility. When it was originally scored based upon the possible points of twenty indicators, the first score that the applicant got was eleven out of fourteen, because only fourteen of the indicators were applicable of the total.
Vidia, I think you just jumped.
Vidia, you're on the wrong slide.
You just jumped a slide.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
There we go.
I realized I scored. Sorry about that. I was just wondering why it went down so much. Sorry about that. So when the first number of points were one on each, the first score of this project Blossom Mills was a total of fifteen. They were not increasing the system capacity for the infrastructure and the pipes, the sanitary sewer or the water pipes, so they got zero points for that. They were not within the affordable housing range, so they got zero for that for workplace development and business attraction because they were in, in the DDA. They scored fifteen points. However, when the new weighted scoring methodology was implemented for this project using its residential, it's a non-DDA but a residential project. These were the new points. They were not all uniformly one. They varied anywhere from point five up to two. When we reviewed this project based upon the new scoring indicators and the way to evaluate it, Blossom Mills scored about fourteen point five out of twenty points. So it went just below the sustainability threshold. The next project was the Revolve and Sun Warehouse. This is an industrial warehouse building on South Street. Six of the points were not applicable to at all, which to this project, which was housing mix, housing affordability, workplace development, business attraction, parking efficiency. None of those were applicable because it was an industrial use in an industrial area out of the DDA. So based upon the new weighted scoring for non-DDA, based upon the points possible, the last few indicators were taken out. And this project originally scored eleven out of fourteen, and the revised score was thirteen out of twenty. So the requirements, as in case of Blossom Mills and the Revolve project, the requirements became more stringent because more emphasis was placed on some indicators and the applicants did not score. The third project we looked at was the Overlook. This was the seventy-two unit condominium complex that was on Letica, south of the OBC. When this project originally came before the planning commission, it scored only nine out of twenty, and they were sent back to try and mitigate the project. After adding to the infrastructure with a new sanitary line and a water main loop, they did line of sight diagrams to ensure that their six-story buildings will not impact the downtown, even though they were significantly away from the downtown. And they did some data indicating how they would contribute to the tax base for the city. Based upon that, they scored thirteen out of eighteen points. Two indicators were still not applicable. When the revised score was used for residential development, not located in the DDA, they scored a total of fourteen point five points. And finally, the fourth project that we ran through the new indicator system was the Riverfront Place that was just recently approved by city council. The one hundred and forty-two unit apartment complex that's at Walnut and First Street. This applicant actually went through the sustainability evaluation four times. The first time they came, they scored around six out of twenty. They had to go back to the drawing board. They repeatedly increased the number of trees they were providing, the infrastructure updates that they were doing, the pedestrian connectivity that they were providing. They actually, looking at it impartially, looking at it just as a residential development in the DDA, based on this scoring indicator, on the current scoring category, which is one point for each, they scored a total of sixteen on twenty. And on the revised score, they dropped by one point and went to fifteen on twenty, and they were still considered as a sustainable project. So what we learned by running the new updated weighted score worksheet to each of the projects that had previously gone through, the current worksheet, which was uniform one point for every indicator, is that the new scoring criteria is more stringent. Just because you are an industrial development doesn't mean the bar for high-quality development is going to be lowered. Just because you are a residential development that is not located in the DDA, doesn't mean you would not be required to upgrade the other indicators in order to provide a higher quality development. So no matter where in the city you are located, this weighted scoring matrix now takes into account your location, it takes into account your use, and it still tells you that you need to try and meet the sustainability score of at least fifteen out of twenty points.
Very good. Comments, council member Peterson?
Yeah, so could someone please explain to me how the school impact plays a part? Because it doesn't seem to make sense. We actually have, you know, more municipalities that are part of that. And how, how did you come up with the minimum increase of five percent in property taxes when the school has nothing to do with the property tax increases the county does?
I will defer to John to answer this because this question did come up at the planning commission too.
So the rationale there was that if a project generated positive tax over and above what the previous development was, it, it was contributing positively to the taxes that were generated to pay for schooling, even though it's not a direct benefit, it doesn't go directly to the Rochester School District. It does benefit the school district indirectly. And when we initially went through this process, we looked at not just local indicators, but regional indicators as well. So that's where we figured the five percent was the minimum increase. So we didn't want to just say if it's a higher tax generator than before, that would be sufficient. We wanted to make sure that it was you know, a relatively significant increase. So five percent increase in tax generation, we feel, the committee felt would eventually benefit the school district, even if it was indirectly.
Okay, I guess I still am, I guess, a little concerned about that being stated for something going forward because those dollars actually don't go directly to education. So that's something that I think needs to be tweaked, and I'd really like to see how any of those projects that were already presented would have shown a school impact from having buildings torn down and then new ones, you know, new projects for those places, what that would actually look like. But I do think that this is really an overreach on stating that that is going to be going towards education and actually helping the school district, even though it definitely needs some help right now. That, I think that needs to be, that's a big concern to me.
Uh, city manager wing?
I just want to note that I think at the bottom of the form, there's actually the notation that goes with the, the asterix that's in in the document that is updated. So I just wanted to bring the attention that when the, um, planning commission and the committee looked at this, uh, this, that notation regarding this specific topic is there. So I don't know if you want to.
Well, still just, I I, nothing's going towards education. That's my point. We're making statements that are not true, uh, moving forward on, especially if developments are coming in and this is going to be something that's going to be used to determine, uh, the sustainability. Um, that's, to me, this is like something that's not sure why it even came about to be even put on here. And, um, also I'd like to go back to the affordability that came up on one of them, that it didn't meet housing affordability. Um, but that's only one segment of society. Um, and it could be, and it's meant in a lot of different ways. That could have been affordable housing for, um, uh, Bloss, uh, for, uh, the Mosheri project, if you were looking at it from the standpoint of senior citizens or or anyone who fifty-five plus that was going to live there. So it could be more affordable than purchasing a home, could be that because of so I think a little more definition needs to go into some of these, um, taglines that everyone is reusing over and over and over to, um, in any project or anything to do with the city municipality and their development.
The, um, the report that was developed by the committee that, uh, spells out the methodology that Vidya went over uh, includes a lot of baseline information, again, both local and regional. So the concept of affordability was definitely scaled to, uh, Rochester and, uh, in the, in the general market area around Rochester.
Further discussion? Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, you know, I was on the original, uh, Sustainable Rochester Task Force and, um, you know, this project has come a long way. I think it's, you know, pretty, uh, close to impossible to have a perfect scoring system. You know, there's always going to be tweaks and changes, you know, the more you use it, the more data you put through it, the experience, the learning. Um, you know, I think we could, you know, probably regularly, annually, biannually review the definitions and the application in the city of Rochester. Um, but I certainly think the the changes to the scoring matrix, um, really make it more practical. And I think it is still a very forward-looking tool that is really helpful for both planning commission and city council to use. Um, really as well as any developer that comes to the city, that they they know, they know what our expectations are, what are we looking for? And I think it really helps us to be able to compare, uh, one project to another. So, um, I I think this is an improvement, a step forward. Um, and I really appreciate the work that's been done.
Good. Further comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So, um, and Mayor Protem Salvia, and I appreciate, um, the your comments as well. My concern is, though, we have been using this, um, I guess, to a degree that I think we're limiting ourselves from actually receiving good development here. Um, with the projects that we've had come through, um, whether they've met it or not, we find a way to work around all these documents all the time. And I'm not understanding what its sole purpose is going to be then, except to have talking points of, you know, what our expectations are. But we're not the ones building, we're not the ones bringing the money here. Um, I think certain guidelines, and if we, if we actually utilize our zoning ordinance and everything else that is, you know, set in stone, that is more of a way to help direct good development than putting together something like this with just little ask. This is almost like saying that we want X, Y, and Z all the time for something. And if you don't meet these criteria, then your project really isn't good enough based on these scorecards. And a- and the scoring system. I I don't, I don't want to limit ourselves from having somebody come in and actually put something in the ground and start working on it. Because and whether or not we even do a special project with some of these items, you're not, you know, that takes you to another level to where some of this isn't even always looked at. So I won't be voting for this because I I just don't think that this is the right way for us to be utilizing um, the things that we have, uh, the development in this community to take us to that next level. We're still like the only community around that really doesn't have a lot of great development actually in the ground. So, thanks.
Very good. Further, further comments? I mean, Mr. City Manager, we, do we need a motion on this? Or?
Yep, we needed a motion to approve so that the planning commission and so that this new document would be the policy update, uh, to the policy. Otherwise, we'd still be following the current one.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the update to Sustainable Rochester.
Motion by the Mayor Protem. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Councilmember Sage. Further discussion? I'd just like to say I I voted for this, um, on the planning commission. I think it's an improvement. I think this is a good roadmap. It's not everything, you you know, we still have special projects, at least for now. But I think this is a good roadmap for developers to use this. It's a good roadmap for the planning commission and city council. So I will support this. I will say, um, maybe in the next iteration, I and I said this to planning commission, I I happen to agree with, uh, Councilmember Peterson on the school issue. This really has nothing to do with the schools. And to say it does just really isn't true. Because we could raise taxes and the school funding could go down. So one really has nothing to do with the other, the way the system's set up now. So Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht? Mark, are you here?
Yeah, I said yes, I.
Okay.
Okay.
Vavakwa?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, Mark, I think you might have broken up there a little bit.
Okay, thanks, mayor.
Uh, next we have the poverty exemption policy update. Mr. City Manager?
Yep, Attorney Krot and I is, uh, worked with our, uh, deputy finance director, uh, Marcy, um, on on this one. And, uh, basically I would consider this a little bit more housekeeping. The county, um, has basically asked all the communities, uh, to update to the same language. And maybe Marcy, if you wanted to provide any other details. And I know the city attorney has reviewed it and has no issues with with this updated language.
Welcome, Marcy.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, sure, that was a good synopsis, uh, city manager. There's really not no significant changes between what was approved previously by city council. It's simply, um, a uniformity issue. Our local assessor that we contract with Oakland County, they would just like to be conforming with all of the communities that they service. So it's really a housekeeping issue, no significant changes to to note. It just needs, um, uh, an approval by council to move forward with the new format.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Um, yes, this was presented by Marcy and Anthony at our budget, uh, uh, committee a couple of times. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the updated resolution procedures and application as requested by the Oakland County Equilization Department.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht. Was that Councilmember Harrison? Support?
Peterson.
Councilmember Peterson, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Salvia, discussion?
Yeah, just to clarify, so the administrative detail that's changed is we're using their form versus a form we had created.
Correct. Initially, we we reached out to Oakland County for their guidance. And they didn't have guidance, um, for us initially. But after reviewing all of our documents in the other communities, they suggested that we be conforming with the the standards and the applications as presented.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Vavakwa?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Next we receive a report from the various boards and commission. First is a report from the principal shopping district. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, mayor. We had a very productive, um, meeting last week. Uh, I I think that we've already recognized the DDA for, um, their hard work and recognition in supporting our local businesses through, uh, uh, the pandemic. Uh, we've had, uh, requests come to council for sidewalk sales. Those are going to be July fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. They're being sponsored by Chief Financial Credit Union this year. On July sixteenth, we'll have, uh, Dancing in the Street featuring Square Pegs and eighties cover band. And on, uh, July seventeenth, twenty-fourth, thirty-first, and August seventh, we will have Movies in the Moonlight in that, uh, Aladdin will kick that off. So some details there, lots of events happening this summer, all, you know, following COVID protocols for the time. We mentioned that we have applied for and received a grant to begin sending text alerts. You'll get those, uh, starting in June. June is also our Love Local Rochester Month. And we will be kicking that off with a new low, uh, drink promotion, so our businesses can submit a specialty cocktail and you can vote online for your favorite one. And we also had, uh, the farmer's market opening day. Uh, the first weekend in May, that Saturday, we had thirty-two hundred in attendance. And Ascension Hospital joined, um, to give away helmets for the first, it looks like four hundred and thirty helmets were given away that day. And kids got to have them fitted and they talked about biking safety. And on June third, we will kick off our Thursday night farmer's market. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Next, next to City Beautiful Commission, Councilmember Harrison?
Great, I will just keep going. Thank you to, uh, my fellow council members for supporting our fundraiser initiative, the, uh, Dogs and Butterfly Dog Wash. We are trying to be more self-sustaining in this organization or in this commission because we want to expand our native plant gardens and promote our mural project. And also do, um, plant giveaways at the farmer's markets. So we are doing that June fifth and twelfth. You can also preorder your native plants online. Uh, we have a mural going up in the Walnut Street parking structure. It's butterfly wings and we're doing a promotion around that. So if you take your photo and share it on, uh, Facebook or Instagram, you'll be entered to win a fifty-dollar gift card. Uh, we also met with garden designers for a native plant garden under the the bridge near the Atala Heart Center. Um, we're hoping to get those planted come the fall, as well as one in the mausoleum, near the mausoleum. And a demo garden at Dinosaur Hill. We are also, uh, we selected a, an artist for our mural project for the GBB building in the municipal park. And we're looking for crafts or things that we could do in order to participate and junk in the trunk is another potential fundraiser for us, but we haven't decided on that for sure yet. Uh, we have not had any nominations for our Good Neighbor Award. So if you have a good neighbor that you'd like to nominate, I'd encourage you to do that. So we can recognize, you know, the great ne- great neighbors we have in this, uh, community. And that's all from the CBC.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yeah, Councilmember Harrison, thank you. So the mural on the Walnut, uh, parking structure, is that temporary or permanent?
That is a permanent.
Well, can I help, Mr. Mayor, it's Nick, if I could help, Amanda. It's actually, it's actually a Klingon. It's not technically a mural. So it's not painted on the structure. Remember, that's the one. You just stick it on and it can come off.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. Next we receive a report from the retirement board, uh, Councilmember Sage, do you want to?
I think, I think the the positive, uh, thing about the meeting was, uh, our new, uh, Morgan Stanley, our new managing partner with this process, has already proven, uh, in one quarter, uh, to have delivered on all the promises they made um, in the direction that they took, uh, the OPEB trust in. So it was, it was a very positive meeting. I don't, uh, I didn't see any risk. They didn't identify any risk right, right yet. And we're just hoping, um, as we go forward, there'll just be more good news. It's already making an impact and, uh, I know Anthony could probably speak to the Gov Invest, um, commitment we made and and it it too is already paying off, right? In the modeling that we're doing and, um, the guidance it's providing.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. It was a very positive meeting. You know, not, not everyone's going to be that positive because the market could go up and down. But this first quarter of Morgan Stanley was pretty impressive.
Yes.
Any questions?
Mayor, may- maybe just for everybody's, uh, just, uh, information. So our, um, O- OPEB is currently funded at a hundred and just under a hundred and twenty-five percent. I want to say it was a hundred and twenty-four and change. So, uh, again, as was just stated by both yourself and Councilmember Sage, um, you know, all of the investments were showing positives. Um, and with Morgan Stanley's, uh, guidance, even for some of the changes that they've recommended, they showed if we would have stayed, there would have been a negative. However, they made some recommendations. The board followed them and they ended up resulting in positives. Um, so there were net gains even where there would have been, uh, a loss of maybe seven percent. There was some, some nice positives. So it was nice, it was a nice meeting to actually see that the recommendations, uh, did bear fruit.
It makes you want to put your own money into those investments. But of course, I also wish I had millions and millions of dollars like this in the OPEB thing. Which I will admit I don't. Um, next, uh, the Pink Creek Trailway Commission's Councilmember Sage?
Yes, a couple of items, um, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I I just saw, I think we did miss the Ra Ra Board one. I I think it.
Yeah. Now that we were, we were, we reported on that last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was, it was in the packet, but, uh, it was not on the agenda.
Got it.
So the Pink Creek Trailways, Councilmember Sage?
Couple of items, um, mark your calendars, June twenty-eighth at four P M., there will be a ribbon cutting for the, uh, Multry Pollinator Garden there on the trail. If you care to attend that. Um, and the second big, big item was we've seen over the last couple of years, the transition between spring to summer, that the trail conditions, as we come out of winter, the trail condition erodes. And it's requiring that we, we have to do some maintenance to the trail along its entirety, the the whole eight point nine miles. So we're looking and hoping that we can engage all the communities to do a a trail surface grading project by mid-June. So currently, Oakland Township and Rochester Hills have completed their section. So Lake Orion and Rochester, um, would need to take a look at some options on how to address that. I would prefer not to have to pay for it. I'm hopeful that there's some, uh, shared services agreement, uh, that we have with the, our neighboring municipalities, particularly the hills, um, that we can borrow some equipment and and satisfy this requirement. Uh, but I I'm going to defer that to the city manager, uh, to Nick, um.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll wear my Public Works hat for right now and and work with Jeremy. So we do have a intergovernmental agreement with, uh, uh, both, uh, Rochester Hills, Auburn Hills, and, uh, Lake Orion as well. So, um, I did receive the email last week and we're working. This is actually a good training opportunity for, uh, some of the communities um, to collaboratively work to resolve, uh, this, this grading issue, which as you noted, is, uh, unfortunately occurring annually now. Uh, in the past, we've been able to kind of do some maintenance patchwork, I'll call it. Um, but the quilt is, uh, needing to have, uh, you know, a a new layer kind of, uh, put on. So, um, we we are looking at this as a collaborative effort and a training opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Yeah, Councilmember Sage, I I I thought that looked like the Rochester part of the trail when I was on it this weekend, looked like it had been graded or something. looked like it had been graded or something, even better. Is that not true, Mr. City Manager?
We, we've done some quick patching of the worst areas. We've had residents and council members that have highlighted over the last month. And so I've had, and along with our Public Works team have, have been out there a few times. So I think we attacked the worst spots. But I think the plan that Councilmember Sage was talking about was the whole entirety, not just kind of hitting the, the worst areas.
Thank you. Next, we're on to the receiver report from the Infrastructure Committee. Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yeah, Councilmember Albrecht and I will do that jointly. So I think, Mark, you're going to start.
Yep, yep. Thank you. We, this was our first meeting in nine months. We last met in August of two thousand and twenty. We had a full agenda of topics to discuss many of these items. We wanted to make sure everybody in city council is aware of because many of these items we're going to talk about over the next few minutes are going to come before city council. So we felt more information is needed now just to sort of prime the well, pardon the pun, as we get into this, who are relief fund. But let me get started. I'll handle a few of them and then Mayor Protem Salvia will finish off. The first one is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund or DWSRF, as we sometimes see in our publications or reports from the city manager wing. That is a program that is a federal state partnership to help ensure safe drinking water. And we get low interest loans from the state. There were three major things that have been going on. One of them you read about in, in City Manager Wing's report this past weekend. But the first one was replacement of a transmission line. This was a major project replacing a water line that was more than a hundred years old. I think we heard it was a hundred and twenty-some or a hundred and thirty years old. And if it had failed, would have cost us millions and millions of dollars. So this was one of those proactive versus reactive works. All work is done on that except for restoration. Restoration means, you know, seeding of the grass and things of that sort. So that one is, as they say, almost in the books. The second one, which City Manager Wing talked about, was the South Street Project that has begun and we anticipate completion the week of June seventh. So by the end of that week, the contractors working with the local businesses and residents to ensure that a traffic flow is maintained at all times. So that one is going on as scheduled. And by the time we meet on June fourteenth should be complete except for restoration. The next time, next topic we spoke about are really our, our street projects. We, we looked at, and just to refresh everybody's memory, going back to the Ludlow experience we had, we're looking at a complete street concept, water, sewer, and road replacement. And this year, we're going to be working on Oak and Mahaffey Streets on the west side with all construction and all that work, water, sewer, and road replacement completed by the fall in November. If possible, yet highly unlikely, we may also fit Helen Street into it, but more than likely, based on what we heard from the contractors and the engineers, that and Fourth Street will be done in two thousand and twenty-two with Wilcox, Wellsea Street, and Castile Avenue scheduled for two thousand and twenty-three. So I'll pause there before I go to the next thing. If anybody has any questions on the work being done under the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Here, now I'll move forward. The next one is the SRF or the Sewer Revolving Fund. This project is completed except for three minor items to complete on the punch list and final accounting of costs. The local company we've been working with, which is called Liquid Force, was acquired by a national company in California called Granite, which has just delayed some paperwork. But in terms of relining the sewers and all the work that was, all the major work has been done. There were three items on the punch list that the City Manager Wing and the engineers are working with to get resolved. But as far as we're concerned, that work is done now. Hand in hand with that is the CCTV bid update. Putting cameras into the sewer lines to main, to evaluate the condition of the sewers and everything else. Bids are going out to install cameras in the sewer lines to monitor these lines. Again, this one will come before council before anything is approved. When we get the bids, we'll, they'll be presented by the Infrastructure Committee for us, a chance for our review and to bid on it. The next one, and then Nancy has a couple of very important ones to, to, to end up is the Romeo and Maine Project. We've talked about this one for a few years, the realignment of Romeo and Maine. While construction on this project is still down the road, we were presented by Attorney Pratt and, and City Manager Wing. There's a small triangle-shaped parcel of land at the corner of Romeo and Maine that we would need to purchase for the alignment and, and improvements needed for that sort of realignment of Romeo and into Main Street. Working with the city attorney and the owner of the property, they're guesstimating the cost of that parcel to be around forty-two thousand dollars based on current land value. Again, like the CCTV bids, we will come to council with much more information on this with the, the diagram of the area, why we feel it's in our best interest to purchase it now. And one of the main reasons you'll hear is that they still don't have full occupancy in that building. When they do, then we'll be dealing with the HOA and getting the HOAs to, to, to do something. Sometimes takes a lot more work than, 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 than we have time for. So we want to deal with the owner. And again, I don't know if Attorney Pratt or City Manager Wing want to add anything to what I just said there before I turn over to Mayor Protem Salvia.
You're good.
All right. So I have a two, two updates regarding the East Side Water System. So this is the Gleewa Water System. So administration and our engineering firms are continuing to look for how can we do a direct connection into Gleewa. We would need some sort of water reservoir and a pumping station to do this. So again, been studied for a number of years. Administration is continuing to review this, looking to see if there's any grant money that would be available at a federal or county or state level. You know, they presented some different scenarios in terms of if there was a six hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank that would equate to ninety-three thousand dollars a year in savings from a water cost standpoint. So again, more to come on this. We are having a meeting next month, so we're getting back into our regular meeting cadence with infrastructure. And there has been a lot going on. So I was pleasantly surprised to see how much activity has taken place. So the second item, again, we purchase for the East Side our water contractually through Shelby Township, ultimately Gleewa Water. We have a contract and in June of two thousand and twenty, the, the flow rate exceeded the, the allowable per, per the contract Shelby to Gleewa. As a result, Shelby has implemented some ordinance changes regarding sprinkling, alternating days, restricting hours. And so it's discussed at infrastructure whether the city of Rochester needs to do something along these lines or not. We have not been notified officially from Shelby or Gleewa. However, Shelby has already purchased a water storage to offset peak demand as well as implemented these restricted sprinkling ordinances. So again, more to come on that. There needs to be some discussion with administration and city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that's an important issue and one that I would hope we would get a jump on with administration and with the city attorney. Because a lack of notification by Shelby or Gleewa, there has to be something in our, the agreement where we have to be notified. And it's got to be pretty well defined in there. So I, I'd like to know before we have that discussion, just what is our responsibility then? Based on whether anyone gave us notification per the agreement?
City Attorney?
Well, the, the agreement from the late nineteen eighties is quite sparse and does not really contain any notice issue for rate changes or anything like that. So we're, we're the, the processes. We've had several discussions internally and I believe that we're going to have a discussion with Shelby Township folks to get a handle on what their expectation is on us. I mean, technically Rochester is a customer of, of Shelby Township. So what we, we're exploring those. You're, you're right that we need to jump on this. And we've had multiple meetings already with engineers and city administration. So we will certainly be on top of this issue.
Thank you. Very good. Anything further for the Infrastructure Committee? Thank you for you guys' work on that. Next, we have a report from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We only had a couple of items on the agenda. First one was the Saint John's Lutheran Church on University. They had a couple of issues that needed to be addressed. A first one was that they are looking to add a second portable to handle the increase in registration they've got in their student body. So if you may remember, I think in two thousand and eighteen, they were looking to renovate their facility and allow for them to grow the, the, the school portion of, of that facility. And that project didn't necessarily come to fruition. So to deal with the overflow, they had a portable put in. They're still saying that they're considering, where their plans are to do the renovation that's going to allow for them to facilitate the number of kids that they have going to the school. But until that happens, they're now going to need a second portable. So that was approved. They wanted a two-year approval to come back in front of, in front of Planning Commission for any kind of extension after that point. Because they feel that, you know, based on COVID and other issues that they're having to deal with, it'll be at least two years before they can try to do any renovation that'll accommodate the kids. So that was passed. Also, coincidentally, their approval for the first portable was, was up in terms of the deadline for them to, to come back in front of Planning Commission in the next month or so. So we approved that extension for another two years. And one final point on that is we did include a bond for fifteen thousand dollars that would pay for any forced removal of these leased portable units, which the administration is going to, I think, work on. And I don't know if we're going to get a copy of that, but I, I would certainly appreciate it when, when the time comes if it could get presented. You know, even in like miscellaneous at the Planning Commission and, and council being copied on it. So that was the one item. And then the other item was the folks at the, that only the cement factory property, one hundred South Street, under the bridge to the, the, well, to the southwest of the, of the bridge. They came to discuss a concept development there. Got some feedback from Planning Commission and I imagine at some point we'll, we'll tighten things up and come back in front of us with a special project request. And that was it.
Good. Any questions? Thank you. Next, on the new business referral miscellaneous, are there any public comments? Brian, it doesn't look like it.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing any.
Okay, thank you. Next receipt of the check register reports. And city manager update, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, check register reports in the packet are from May thirteenth and May twentieth. As for the managers' updates, as the mayor stated, he and I will be meeting this week. I'll have those updated procedures that we'll post on the city's website as well as our social media is, and then on the city, either the window or doors at the front. Council will continue to be updated as those diagrams and the meetings are, are finalized. But for city council, our next meeting isn't till June fourteenth, so there is a little bit of time. But we do have a Planning Commission meeting, as the mayor knows. So we do want to get that information wrapped up and, you know, finalized here shortly. In the managers' update miscellaneous items on page eighty-six of the tonight's packet, there's just two items. As was noted, under the infrastructure of South Street, I just want to highlight one other item on that. Any of our construction projects, actually, we have informational updates on our city website as well as residents or anybody quite honestly could sign up for an email notification. So we send out on Fridays, what's the upcoming, might even be the Saturday. In this particular instance, a Saturday work. But we try to, weather-dependent, project what the, the next week's projects are. And again, as was noted, we work with the residents and businesses, so they were not disrupting. So South Street's just another one of those. And when we get to Oak and Mahaffey, definitely will be providing those updates once, once that gets underway. Other than that, and I don't want to steal the mayor's thunder, but I do want to put a plug in at least or a reminder, I guess. We do have the memorial ceremony that's coming up. And I want to give a special thanks to the, the city clerk, our department representatives, as well as the mayor and Mayor Protem for your guys' extra efforts to make sure that this event this year. I know we've had some changing COVID requirements. And so it's been a pleasure to work with the clerk and staff and as well as the mayor and Mayor Protem on getting this event established. So that's all I have.
Very good. City Clerk?
Nope, Mr. Manager Wing said it all.
Very good. City Attorney, anything tonight?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Banda, anything?
Well, sir, thank you, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Albrecht.
I had just two things. I know that Blaine talked about the Memorial Day event. I was pleased to see this morning when I went on LinkedIn that the city of Rochester had put a, you know, please join us for Memorial Day Ceremony. I snapped, snapped that picture and put it on Facebook. So because I'd, I'd seen that Rochester Hills had done that, so some of their city councils. So I think we need to do more of that to make sure our message is getting out there. So I would just ask city administration, when you're putting stuff out on social media, and I know there's many of us on city council who are pretty active on social media and anything we can do to, I just shared it, you know, and, and other people are sharing it. And I, we want a good turnout to honor our fallen soldiers on Memorial Day. Secondly, I, I, I spoke to a few people about this, including City Manager Wing. But I, I think we, I, I asked the city administration to do a better job of informing city council of groundbreaking and ribbon cuttings. I don't know how these things are happening, who gets invited. But when you have a brand new business coming into the city, let us know. Not all of us are going to be able to be there. There will have some conflicts. But it seems like there's no, there's no protocol for ribbon cuttings. I'm not part of the Rochester Chamber. I see things on there, but I don't know if I can just show up. So if, if, if we could do a better job having Natalie communicate to us that a new business coming into town, obviously the mayor or Mayor Protem will be there to, 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 to read the proclamation. But I'm sure we would all want to be there to, you know, welcome with open arms these, these businesses into town. So that's my request. Thank you.
I think that's a very good request. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Oh, yes, thank you. First, I would like to announce that there will be a celebration of life for Sue Ann Douglas on Wednesday, June sixteenth at the River Crest from two to five. And all is welcome and they are very excited to finally be able to honor Sue Ann Douglas for who she was in our community. So hopefully all will attend. Also, I have, I would like to know if we can get an update on the community house, where that's at in the process right now, how much we have spent as the city between, since it started this year and if there's been any money raised. Also, I would like to thank those that work so hard at getting the sidewalks repaired downtown. They look, it looks a lot better down there. And also wanted just to see where we're at in getting the DPW director search under, underway. And also like to thank Nancy, Mayor Protem Salvia and Councilmember Albrecht for the update on the infrastructure. It was good to hear a very in-depth report today. Thank you. Um a very um in-depth report today. Thank you.
Very good. Uh. Mr. City Manager, do you want to? With the community house, all that information, want to bring that to the next meeting or do you have that on you?
Um I I want to get from the architects and engineers. I know they're uh working on things and then I will work with finances to the financials. So I'll be happy to uh provide an updated the next meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor. Yes, sir, thank you. Um also, can we um are we fully um done with the funding on the DPW building? Has that all been? Been finalized?
It's not. Uh I actually talked with the engineers uh this afternoon around four thirty. Um and asked them to have their final report so that they could be presenting at the last meeting in June.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Yeah, thank you. Um I did have one other infrastructure sort of item. I noticed in the paper, we had the twenty twenty drinking water quality report. Um I think that normally comes before council. I don't, I don't think it came to council, so I'm just wondering if maybe this needs to come to council. I mean, it was a good report, all good news, but. Um you know, just terms of protocol, I just want to make sure that comes before the residents and is in the packet.
Happy to include it. Um I think it's a state requirement that it's published. Uh so it reflects back. I'm happy to to work with uh Corey, our water foreman. Uh he's the one that's actually submitting to the state and getting that uh published in the uh the paper to meet the the state requirement. Um I believe we also normally afterwards put it in a a link or a small uh. I'll call it summary into our upcoming uh summer newsletter once it's uh finalized. Uh so now that it's published. I'm sure Corey was just making sure we met the actual state requirements.
Right. Thank you. Makes sense. Um the other item, I know that we have a new ambulance that we just put into service and I know in other communities. Um there's some sort of protocol or tradition around when there's a new uh fire truck. Uh the council celebrates it and puts it into service. Has the city ever done anything like that with an ambulance?
I don't think we've purchased one since I've been here other than this one, so I will uh work with the fire chief to see. I in other communities, I've uh you know, uh had. Some of those sort of events, so even a bottle of champagne that's uh broken over the the vehicle to kind of christen it, if you will. Um so I will work with the chief and find out if that's a tradition that they've done in the past.
Yeah, I think we should do something. This is, you know, it's a significant purchase for the city and uh health is. Kind of the theme of the past year. I think it would be very appropriate. Um and I'll see y'all Memorial Day at the cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. I think in the past, when we bought a fire truck, I think we all rode from city hall to the fire. Oh, I seem to remember that one time, but okay. But um. Seemed like fun at the time, I would say. Uh Councilmember Vakla.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to um applaud the Oakland County for uh. A very successful state of the county address. I appreciated the updates and what's been happening this past year. Like to applaud our our mayor for your words at the Chief Financial Credit Union groundbreaking. We're excited to see that investment made in our community, although it's bittersweet seeing. The US scuba shop uh go that was near and dear to my heart. I'd also like to mention that the Rochester area Youth Assistance League had a parade this year to recognize. The uh three. Award winners for their outstanding service in the community, one of which was a senior who received. A scholarship and that was a nice event to participate in. And um I'm looking forward to our Memorial Day recognition as well. Thank you.
Very good. And I I would just like to say the chief financial, I think they said, went from. Um they were thirty percent in the city of Rochester and now they're going to be over fifty percent in the city of Rochester. We will claim them as our own now.
We get fifty one percent?
Fifty one. Yes, I wasn't something like that. Councilmember Sage.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Okay, I just uh two things. Um one, uh you know, I was out of. Out about town yesterday or this past weekend. And there's a lot of talk about what's going on at the school building. And there's already starting to be rumors about what's going in there, what isn't. And I just. Just for everybody to know, we talked, you know, a little bit. I talked with the city manager and things that. You know, one, the school board. Still owns it and has not done anything yet. So you know, we really are not involved in the process. And it is zoned residential and anything that goes in will have to go before the planning commission or if it's a special project. If you still have the special project, it will come to city council, I think. But right now there is nothing on on the table. But I have had a number of people ask me what is going in there. And as of now, we don't know. And you know, there's no no plan really because the school board is still deciding. You know, when to sell it and how to sell it and 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 what actually to do on that. So. But that issue is is a coming our way uh eventually, I think. Um uh Councilmember Vakla.
Yeah, just a little bit of a follow up comment on that. Um the so I I did ask uh whether there that was a special project area or not. Um and apparently it is not. So if there were to be anything done differently than what the current uh zoning ordinance. Requires, then we would have to have uh some sort of zoning change done at the.
That's right. So I mean, there are a lot of things to, a lot of steps and a lot of things to work out. Um but you know, I've heard, you know, somebody said they heard there's million dollar condos going in there. There's going to be an art center. There's going to be, you know, all kinds of things. And I I just kept saying. There's there's nothing yet. Nothing's come to the council. Um but that kind of conversation is out there. And then the second thing is just the Memorial Day. Again, thank you to the city management for kind of putting that together. One, it's a great event for our veterans and two, we're kind of billing it as. You know, uh re reopening of our city, everybody kind of getting back out into the world. Um which I think is kind of a great combination of of veterans and freedom and things like that. So. Look forward to seeing everybody there. And uh anything further? Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and we will all see each other in person. The next time uh we see each other. So that will be a lot of fun, too. So thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned. Good night.
Night. Thank you.